All right. All right, we're going to call to order the February 3, 2015, meeting, work-study session of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first item is roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Passiak.
Present.
Commissioner Sloan.
Here.
Vice Chair Merritt.
Here.
And Chair Rowitch.
Here.
Thank you.
Item 3A, under discussion item, additional information regarding proposed changes to the sign code.
Ah, yes, the sign code. There's my slideshow. So, last month, we talked about all the different kinds of signs there were. This month, we're going to talk about, at this meeting, the way that the UDO is laid out currently versus the, a more efficient way of laying out the code so that it's more easily understood. And when we get into talking about the agribusiness, we are going to, there's a great example in there of how bad the sign code actually is. So, the current outline, we have all 12 of these different things. We have a purpose and an intent, and the general regulations, and different things talking about different sign areas for different kinds of sign, heights for different kinds of sign, if it's a pole sign, if it's a wall-mounted sign, if it's a wall-mounted sign in an apartment building versus a wall-mounted sign in a dental office, there are two different heights. The permitted permanent signs are the big, large signs that you're used to seeing, and they're pretty much what they say they are, they're permanent signs. The temporary signs are all the little A-frame signs that we see around town, you know, that the business owners are taking in and out, in and out at night. Subdivision signs speak directly and only to those signs that are included with a subdivision plat. This portion of the UDO, for whatever reason, talks only in terms of residential subdivisions and doesn't address commercial and industrial subdivisions. Then we go on and talk about submittal and permit requirements, exceptions to the sign code, prohibited signs, and non-conforming and unsafe signs, and how those are dealt with. So, this is the current format of the UDO, if you try to make some sense out of it. In the permitted, permanent signs, we talk first about agriculture and residential zoning, and then every single kind of sign is discussed, then we talk about non-agricultural and residential, or as most people would call it, commercial and industrial, and then every single kind of sign is discussed there. Under the temporary signs, banners, pennants, and displays, off-site directional signs, political signs, real estate signs, construction or development signs, and we addressed some of these off-site signs earlier, God, was it late last year, early in the spring, when we talked about temporary amendments to the sign code for temporary signs, so that we could address the code as a whole. These signs, the list of regulations for each one varies depending upon the type of sign it is, in terms of the materials that are allowed, where they can be put, how long they can be there, and sometimes it talks about what zoning districts they can be used in, but not always. Again, in terms of subdivision signs, it talks about the permanent entry and identification signs, and then temporary subdivision advertising and directional signage, and like I mentioned earlier, this section presumes it's a residential subdivision, it does not address a commercial or an industrial subdivision. So, again, when you talk about this, we have agriculture and residential districts, and we talk about wall signs, and then a single residential use, a multiple residential use, a non-residential use, then the freestanding monument signs, and we go through those same things again, and then directional signs. So, we're just, the document is repeating itself, repeating itself, repeating itself. These are all, again, the different kinds of signs and subsections that we have in the code today, that could be, that are all listed out individually, here's the standard, here's when you can have them, sometimes we talk about zoning districts, sometimes we don't. So, this is what it looks like, all written out. This is the agriculture and residential districts for all signs within ag and residential, for a wall sign, these are all the rules, and then for non-agricultural and residential. Now, there's another whole chunk of other agricultural and residential district signs that are allowed before you get down to Section B. This is simply the part that applies to the wall signage. So, instead of having all of these subsections and all of these separate areas where we talk about different signs that are really the same signs, and we talk about them over and over, the proposal is, staff's proposal is that we refine the outline of the chapter so that we are down to eight sections rather than 12, and you can see that we've combined purpose and intent, the definitions will stay largely the same, they'll be organized a little bit more, a little differently, talk about the permits required, talk about general provisions, and the sign standards, and the heights and the design standards will be included in the table. We'll talk about exceptions to the sign code, because there are always exceptions, we'll talk about non-conforming and prohibited signs, and then, of course, maintenance and repair. So, reordering it, this is how we're looking, so that it's much more linear and easier to understand. So, this is what it would look like ultimately when we are done. So, you will have a purpose for the sign, you will have the zoning districts that they are allowed in, what the maximum dimensions are, and what the standards are, one or more per unit, for instance, a single-family residential identification sign. So, you're talking about, this regulates the kinds of signs people put on their houses. Welcome to the Maydays, beware of puggle, cat crossing, anything like that falls into this section. You're allowed three square feet, one or more per unit, maximum height 10 feet, and it's limited to name of occupant or resident, street address only. The AR 36, you get a little bit more, you get eight square feet, one or more per unit, maximum height 10 feet, name of occupant or residence, street address only, that's what you get. That's it, that's it. So, if you have any of those other signs, they're not allowed by the sign code. And so, in laying it out this way, it's much more clear, it's direct, you get to see exactly where, what zoning code specific signage is allowed in, you get to see what your maximum is and what the standard is, how many you're allowed, what the height is, what can be included in the sign area, those sorts of things. So, it's much more clear to staff and to applicants, so that they can look at this and go, okay, I have a, I have a single business within a complex, what kind of sign can I have? And here it is, right here, in terms of wall signage, this is what I get. So, in terms of a schedule for reviewing this, tonight, this is the matrix that I wanted to review, and this is how we will go back through the UDO, put all of the sign ordinances that we have now into this format, because once you start reading it, what it actually says, it's much more easy, it's much quicker to find the errors and the things that need correction. So, we'll have it in this format for the March meeting, for everyone to review, and start working on some language corrections and things like that at that time. So, the schedule we have here is my fantasy life, I'd love to have this done by July, however, given that the city of Chandler is now at the Supreme Court with some signage issues, we will probably be waiting until they're done before we actually come forward with public hearings, so that we are not doing something and then undoing it again. In terms of outreach with the committee, for the community, we have, we sent out a letter in each business license renewal this year, so that every business owner that is licensed in the town would know that we are going to take this on, and they would have an opportunity to participate. We've talked about it on Facebook, the Chamber of Commerce is aware this is going on, and we've had input from the Chamber. I'm going to the Realtors Association meeting next week, and we'll be discussing this there. And then, of course, once we get to the public hearing process, there are statutory postings and notifications. So, does anybody have any questions so far? Does this make sense?
That makes a lot more sense than the wordage did.
This is really pretty easy to follow. Okay? All right. Now, we can go on.
All right, moving on to item 3B, discussion regarding creation and implementation of an agribusiness overlay district.
Come on, PowerPoint. Okay, so, as we've seen this evening with Mr. Marinelle's project, there has been an uptick, a significant uptick in interest in doing both small and medium-sized agricultural businesses in the town of Chino Valley, not just the greenhouses, but raising organic chickens, and turkeys, and sheep, and those sorts of things. So, right now, the way the code is written, some of these uses are considered commercial, some are not, some are kind of in between, so in an effort to try to clarify who is what and what standards apply, the mayor has asked that we look into a, doing some sort of agricultural business zoning classification or overlay, or addition to the existing residential and agricultural uses, so that we can be clear on who is an ag business and who is not. So, in terms of how the UDO currently defines things, agriculture is the tilling of soil, raising of crops, horticulture, viticulture, silviculture, including uses customarily incidental thereto, including the raising of animals. Silviculture, by the way, I Googled that one, that's forestry. Agricultural business, any business use allowed within the town limits of Chino Valley, providing the operation of such use has a Chino Valley business license and/or proof of filing IRS Form F. A private arena, an indoor/outdoor facility for activities relating to livestock included, but not, including but not limited to equestrian cattle, et cetera, for the sole use of the property owner and guests. Public arena, of course, is the same thing, only for the general use and/or attendance by the public. And we define commercial as any activity which is conducted primarily for compensation or profit. So, in talking about this, and again, this is very general, because we're just trying to develop a concept here, and that's why we want to talk about this in a study session as to ideas that the commission may have, ideas that the public may have, so that as we work together to develop this, we're getting some healthy input and some advice from the people that are actually out in the field, no pun intended. So, to which zoning districts would this apply? Do we want to look at this in terms of a minimum zoning, a minimum acreage? Should it be a minimum of two acres, a minimum of 10 acres? Certain improvements, do we want to tie them to a minimum amount of acreage? For instance, do we want to say, all right, in order to have additional facilities for housing workers on your property, you have to have at least 10 acres? Do we want to limit it to strictly the agricultural residential zoning districts, or do we want to allow these sorts of activities in any zoning district where farming and owning livestock and agricultural activities are permitted by right, which right now is anything from AR 36 to SR 1, and it does include some of the commercial as well? And in talking about this, you know, everybody has a different idea of what agriculture is and what an agribusiness is, and I think it's important to understand that it's not necessarily ranching or farming anymore in the way people think about in terms of large acreage and row crops and things like that. We have, we have residents that, for instance, grow lavender, and they make wreaths out of the lavender, and they sell those, and it's not exactly a home occupation, because part of it's outside and part of it's inside. But can they invite people on the property? Could they, once a year, have a, offer a class on how to make your own lavender wreath? Well, right now, we don't really allow for that. So, that's one of the things that, you know, in thinking about this, we need to consider, is this something that we want to encourage or not? So, again, what, the activities or uses are considered agribusiness, the off-the-top-of-the-head list was, you know, obviously, we'd be including horse and livestock shows, rodeos, agricultural exhibitions, if we had an FFA fair or a 4H fair. Greenhouses would obviously be considered an agribusiness if you're selling the produce, except for medical marijuana, and that would be a specific exception to the agribusiness rules. Wedding facilities, special events, the people want to do, there are fundraising dinners, educational activities, ag tours, farm tours, how-to-grow-your-own-food classes, those sorts of things that there's interest in doing, but we don't really allow for it specifically or even indirectly in some, in some instances. For instance, the winery has some food service, can we figure out a way so that they can do that year-round? Are there other places that would like to do that in terms, you know, relative to a wedding or some other special event? Again, there have been a number of fundraising dinners for people who get injured, people who have health crises, and to make it a little bit easier for some of these other entities to step up and participate in that. And then, any others that I haven't thought of. There are some additional, different needs that agribusiness has relative to straight commercial, which is worker housing, a lot, if you have livestock or a lot of crop, you have a lot of, you need help, and the typical ranch or operation may need to have somebody living on site. Right now, we only allow for a guest house as opposed to an ag worker home, but then again, we have to think about this in terms of not circumventing the multifamily prohibition in a single-family residential zoning, so we're not having duplexes built. We can't just call it worker housing, we have to have, you know, there has to be somebody that works on site, it has to conform to residential building codes. So, those are some of the things that we need to be looking at in this. Development standards, do we want to talk about a different development standard than other commercial uses? Do we want to define non-daily commercial activities related to the raising of livestock or cultivation and production of crops? Talk about dust mitigation, can we talk about phasing plans for improvements? There's some question about drainage and grading permits for crop production activities, it's pretty clear that if you're disking, you're not grading, but we have had some requests for clarification of that. Code compliance with other regulations, the previous zoning code, prior to 2006 exempted ag from the building code, we can't do that anymore. And to differentiate between public versus non-public spaces, so if there are no public activities in a private barn or a repair shed, that's a little different than one where the public is entering. And different parking standards for special events based on previous attendance rather than square footage of public space. If you're talking about someplace that has, you know, a horse arena and attached facilities that encompasses an entire acre, and we base it on one parking stall per 300 square feet, that's a lot of, that's a ridiculous amount of parking no one will ever use. So, those are the kinds of things that we need to be discussing in terms of a development standard, and these are the kinds of things that we'll be looking at coming down the road. This is a glaring example of how sideways the sign ordinance has gone. In order to get directional signage, it is limited to multiple residential uses and non-residential uses, which in agribusiness would be a non-residential use. It's not to exceed six square feet or a height of three feet. It's not included in the aggregate sign area, which is good, but it's the, only 25% of the sign area for a business can have a business logo or any identification. The use number and location must be approved by the site plan review process in Section 1.7 and comply with the ordinance. The site plan review committee has nine members, town manager, development services director, zoning administrator, town engineer, planner, economic development director, fire chief, police chief, parks and recreation director, public works director. This is for six square feet of signage. After those nine people make a recommendation, it then has to go to planning and zoning for recommendation, and town council for final approval, for six square feet of onsite directional signage. So, if you want to put a sign out that says, "Marinelle's Produce Stand, Park Here," this is what he has to go through to do that. So, this is one of the reasons that we really need, and this is how, in putting this into that matrix, I looked at this and went, holy cow, this is ridiculous, to go through all of this for six square feet of signage, and no more than three signs, with only 25% of it occupied by a logo or business identification. So, clearly, we need to do something about this in terms of what people are allowed to do, not just for agribusiness, but again, for onsite directional signage, should not be this hard. Offsite directional signage will also impact some of these businesses that have temporary events, horse shows, pumpkin festivals, pick-your-own-strawberries, whatever season it is, you know, the FFA meeting, or the 4H, you know, cattle show, or sheep weigh-in, or any of the things that they, the kinds of things that they do. It can only be in commercial industrial districts or on public or institutional property, you get one sign of the two different dimensions, you have to have approval of the time, date, location of the portable sign from the development services director, and submit an annual fee upon application. You can't put it in the right-of-way or town-owned property unless it's a town event, you can't put it on anybody else's property without their written consent, and you can't leave it out there during hours of non-operation. Now, most of us that go up and down 89, you see these signs, advertising, horse shows, corn roast, all these kinds of things. This is what they have to go through to get signs. And again, this is not, these directly impact the agribusiness, but they also impact everybody else's business as well. I almost cut this out and put it in the other one. So, these are the kinds of things that we need to be looking at and thinking about when we're talking about doing an agribusiness sort of district, is how do we want to define it, what are the activities we want to allow, what zoning districts do we want to have it in? We will be forming a work group for this as well as the signage, so that we can get some input from the community and bring some suggestions from the agribusiness community, so that we can get their opinion, what is it that they need versus how do we safeguard public health and safety? So, somewhere in there, I'm hoping we can reach some sort of happy medium.
Are there some standards from other communities that we can pull from?
I'm going to look at some things from the Farm Bureau and see what they have, that's one of the ones that we're going to look at, and also Yavapai County, and see what they have.
So, this basically would allow businesses or agricultural-type businesses to
Right.
... function in agriculture districts if they fall within those, but it would require them to rezone, not get used permits or other things like that?
We can add it as a conditional use permit, or we can just allow it as a use by right.
That would almost be the purpose of doing it, was to have it used by right, otherwise it would just fall under a conditional use permit.
There's a fine line between over-regulating and under-regulating, and this is kind of leaning towards the over-regul, what we do now is on the over-regulating side. You know, it's, it's, the fixation with regulating the size of greenhouses here amazes me, because we already have lot coverage standards, 50%, when you cover that much, you're done. If you want to come in and ask for variance to put up more, you can do that. But why we limit people to 600 square feet of greenhouse space? If I've got five acres and I want to put up a 610-square-foot greenhouse, why can't I? I'm not exceeding the, it's not, there's no harm or negative impact to a greenhouse, unless you're growing medical marijuana, that, you know, we need to be this regulatory over. Does that make sense?
So, by developing this district, it might also make it easier for people who want to get into the agribusiness profession to utilize maybe current property that they have.
Correct. So, you could put up a chicken coop, you could raise free-range chickens. You know, you can either sell them at Marinelle's, you can sell them at the farm market, you can do whatever, you can sell organic eggs. You know, one of my neighbors back in Michigan had a porch fridge with a bucket on top with eggs in it, you know, it was a dollar a dozen, you just put your dollar in there and took a dozen eggs. That's, those are the kinds of things that we're talking about.
As long as we're not, my concern is that we'll cross that fine line.
Of a free-for-all?
Of a commercial use in an agriculture area.
Right.
Because we've already done that a couple of times here in front of this very commission, so I want to be, I'm not opposed to this concept.
Right.
I just want to be careful about the types of uses we allow within this district and the limits
Correct.
... to what constitutes an agribusiness, and how big an agri, how much of an impact an agribusiness will have on neighbors who are also sound agriculture, who just want to live there.
Correct, yep.
And just want to have their open space and their pet horses and their pet goats.
Right.
You know, so that's the balance that I'm looking for.
Right, and that's, that's the balance I think we're all looking for. I'll let you know when I find it.
It appears to me that this is really a necessity, not an option.
Pardon me?
It appears to me that this is a necessity, not an option.
To rewrite some of this?
Well, to develop this district, because I see Chino Valley is perfectly suited for this sort of thing.
Right.
So, we need to be very, like, the commissioner chair says, we need to be very specific in order to prevent past mistakes being repeated.
Right, absolutely, and that's why I'm bringing this to you now, so when you talk to people about it, somebody says something to you about it, and they have some idea, let me know what they have to say. There are people, it's like anything else, there's going to be somebody who's going to try to abuse it. We've all seen that. And so, the trick is to write this so that it's going to allow people to put up onsite circulation signs, so that, but not have to go through a planning and zoning and town council to get permission for six square feet of signage. We need to be able to allow them, you know, to have FFA chickens without having to come and fill out a form and get it signed by your teacher, and bring all of this stuff back. If you're on an acre, it's six chickens. You know, if they're in a pen and they're properly cared for, which is what you're learning in FFA, as to how to take care of them, or 4H for that matter, there really shouldn't be that kind of an issue in taking care of this. And when it comes to noise, smell, those are all things we can control with code enforcement.
Where does being grandfathered in on items come into this, whether it be signage or If everybody's already grandfathered, this could take a lot of years to get it turned around? Or is it, does it become any immediate, and everybody then has to comply by a certain date?
Well, it's not quite that simple. So, when, when we pass new ordinances, for instance, if you're talking about signage, right? If you have a legal sign right now that conforms to code, and we change it and it is now non-conforming, you get to keep that sign until 50% of it or more is destroyed by fire, by flood, by whatever, or you decide you want to put in a new one. So, at that point, the new sign has to comply, but if you have an existing sign that's already in compliance, and we pass a new ordinance that makes it not comply, you don't have to do anything. You don't, we don't come out to, oh, you got to take that down, you're two square feet too big. You're, you're fine until you actually replace that sign or 50% or more is destroyed. Does that clear that a little bit better?
Yes.
And then, in terms of something like this, if we were to change it for the ag uses, so they would be able to use it, they would be able to take advantage of these uses within 30, 30 days after, because there's a 30-day cooling-off period after an ordinance is passed.
So, this overlay district would effectively be over to any agriculture zoning that currently have.
That's what we're going to be talking about.
So, it wouldn't be a one- So it wouldn't be a one-on-one?
It would be
It would just, you would simply be adding this criteria then to the ag zone district?
We can do it that way, or we can create an actual overlay district like we do with the planned area development, where they have the plan, come in and get it approved. You have to ask to be able to do it, and then demonstrate that you are going to meet the So those are the two ways we can do it. We can either plug the language right straight into the existing zoning districts, or we can add it as an overlay district, and it would be similar to the planned area development.
That's a tough one. For me personally, I'm going to have to see more of what you're proposing before I could tell you.
Right, and that's, this is simply introductory. These are the kinds of things
Yeah, I've never heard of this before, so this is kind of fascinating to me, but
This is the kind of thing that we're, we're seeing a definite increase in this, this homesteading and do your own, grow your own food movement has really taken off, and we get a lot of requests for this kind of things. I just had a guy call me today, hey, can I raise a calf on an acre? Well, just because you can doesn't mean you should, but, you know, yes, in your zoning, you can. So.
Well, I'm sure you'll shake out the signage part of it, it's the uses that I, and the conditions around the uses that I'm most interested in.
Yes. Well, I think that's what we're all interested in because that's going to be how we define it and regulate it.
All right, so you'll bring this back to us again at another meeting?
Yeah, it'll be a while. Any other questions?
Okay. Any public comments? All right, seeing none, motion to adjourn? Yes, sir?
Excuse me, right now, what size sign can I have?
I got, well, I got to drag the book out, and we'll talk about what kind, what size I'll get
Okay, because three-by-two, you can't advertise nothing on a three-by-two sign.
Right.
The gas station prices are bigger than that.
Right.
So I'm at a loss here.
Right, we will get together tomorrow and discuss that.
Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard you said you made the first.